Good evening. I'd like to call to order this town council meeting, regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September 27, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Deacon Eugene Riott of the Holy Trinity Church. Please rise.
Thank you. God, our heavenly Father, we gather in your presence, aware of the many gifts you have bestowed upon us as citizens of this nation and this community, especially the gift of freedom which allows us to assemble here without fear, discuss and debate the issues before us. We ask that you grant wisdom, patience, and understanding to all those who participate. To those who defend and preserve the gift of freedom, the brave men and women of our armed forces serving at home and abroad, we ask that you guide them and keep them safe, especially those serving in areas of violence and conflict. We ask that you give comfort to their families who anxiously await their return. We ask that you watch over the men and women of our police and fire departments and all emergency personnel who stand ready each day to protect us from harm. We ask that you, the source of true peace, send your peace to heal today's troubled world. All these petitions we place before you, a loving and gracious God who hears and answers every prayer offered to you. Amen.
Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marone. Chortel.
Present.
Sullivan. Testa.
Here.
Zandry. And Chairman Savoni.
Here. Councilor Marone has advised me that because of a school meeting, he will be late. Councilor Zandry advised me that because of a work obligation, he will be late, and I believe Councilor Sullivan has a work conflict. With that, on to item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. On to item four, items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor.
Certainly.
In layman's terms, can you explain what the conflict is with C-MAC and the Wallingford Electric Division?
There is disagreement over amounts charged to Wallingford on an annual basis, and the effort is to reduce the amount that we are being charged for power.
What kind of charges?
There is...I'm not going to try to get into the details of it. You said in layman's terms. In layman's terms, that's what it is. It's charges for their handling fees, for their apportionment of costs that are intrinsic to their operation. You know, there's a variety of charges.
The reason I'm asking is because we've been involved with C-MAC for 20 years or more. So the question becomes, did these just spike up now, or were they always there?
Some have...some were changed shortly before and after we left C-MAC. Some deal with extra contracts, the so-called springing contracts, dealing with the diesel units and Pierce plant, et cetera. And those...you know, there's questions about how costs are allocated, given that we're no longer in C-MAC.
But we still own a percentage of the plant, though, till, like...
Those contracts, we're still in those contracts, right.
I'm just confused because I don't know if it was one of these meetings, the electric division's come back for more money, and now you're up to, correct me, 1.7, 1.8 million in lawyer's fees?
That's, I believe, what is estimated, that hasn't been paid at this point, we're in the process of the dispute resolution with an arbitrator, but the gross amount that was estimated was some $18 to $20 million over the time period, recent years through 2025. So, you know, in the interest of not having our ratepayers be paying more than they should over that period of time, that's the reason for the dispute resolution.
You said 18 to 20 million? I thought it was 8 million.
No, it was $18 to $20 million.
That's the amount that's contested here? That's the gross amount or the spread?
No, that's over the time period until 2025, that would be the accumulative amount of money that we feel we would be paying that we do not feel is justified.
All right, so there's a number that we owe, say, a million, and you're saying there's a spread from that million, and that's 18 million more?
No. We're paying every year more than what we think we should. If you add up the amount of additional charge every year, from, say, now until 2025, it would be in the $18 to $20 million range.
That's what I'm saying, so we have a base number that the town feels that we owe, and then they're saying we owe this amount. That spread is 18 to 20 million dollars more.
I don't like...
Well, I'm just going based on what you're saying.
We're saying we're being billed and we're paying it, so I'm nervous over use of the word "spread."
Okay.
We're paying bills that we feel are higher than they should be. If you add up what the excess we feel over every year from now to 2025, it would be a total of some $18 to $20 million.
And do you have an idea? I mean, I know you're in arbitration or mediators, and I know you've had discussions with the electric division, with the town attorneys and so forth. Is there an end date that looks like on the horizon? I mean, I know you're not going to say November 1 because nothing's gold, but do you see an end to this in the near future?
I would hope so. I would hope it would come to an end by at least sometime in 2017, right? Sometime in 2017. Sooner the better, as far as we're concerned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the public? Nobody else wants to get in between Mr. Gross's questions?
For the council, to the mayor, too, I don't know who...the solar array on the Wallingford landfill, has there been any progress on that?
I have no new information.
Because if you saw today's paper, I think it was in today's paper, Cheshire is going into contract, hopefully with SolarCity, to do a small array, though, four acre or something of that nature of solar. You see Meriden's doing theirs, Derby's done theirs, and so forth. At some point, does the council or the mayor think that maybe it might be something to take a look at, or does the PUC have to do that?
As has been stated before, the project that you just asked about was a company that came in and wanted to apply for a grant program with DEEP, and they were receiving applications. I don't know what has occurred over the summer with regard to their applications, if they became one of the chosen parties, there could be a project. If not, then they would not enter into a lease or agreement with us in order to put solar panels at our landfill. As to entering into other projects, you know, it all depends upon how much you want to gamble money.
Well, seems that most communities are gambling, so it's, you know, just because somebody jumps in the water doesn't mean everybody should jump in the water, but at least you should be, or the council should be, looking at this as a source of revenue. It's green. I mean, we've gone through it a million times. I know that, and I'm not saying anything negative, but new technologies and new things aren't...Wallingford isn't known for, but these are things that now have been used for years, and battery storage is now becoming more and more readily available, so you're able to store the energy you produce during the day for nighttime use. So hopefully that the town will start to, hopefully, look at these things to potentially save us some tax dollars and be greener. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. The mission of our electric division is to make sure we have the lowest rates feasible. Our current understanding would be that any solar project would be an additional cost because of the nature of it and would not be in keeping with keeping our rates as low as possible. Typically, it's a subsidized program, and it does not provide lower prices.
And I would agree with the mayor that the rates are going to be very competitive, but they are subsidies to make it competitive with town. But in one respect, though, Mayor, we do get...Wallingford Electric does get involved in other projects that aren't as cost-effective. Some of those projects that you just spoke of, that the electric division has contracts with C-MAC that go to 2021, 2017, I think, and I think there's one that goes out even further, those aren't as cost-effective as our electricity, but they do them for sources of revenue and potential to lower our rates, and that's why they should look at solar. Thank you.
I'll just state I disagree.
We understand. Any other comments from the public? There being none, I close the public question and answer period. On to item six, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the ordinance entitled Fire Prevention Bureau Fee Schedule for Plan Review and Certification License Good evening, gentlemen. If you could kindly remind us who you are for the record.
Good evening, Richard Higard, Fire Chief.
Good evening, Michael Godolsky, Fire Marshal.
And we reviewed this in the ordinance committee. Am I correct to understand that there's no language change in this? It is just adjusting the fee schedule. You're just changing the dollar amounts of the fee schedule, is that correct?
The whole fee schedule is new, so there has been no changes since the ordinance.
Okay. And if you could summarize the adjustments to the fee schedule or the introduction of it?
The introduction of the fee schedule is to collect fees for any type of building construction for plan reviews, mechanical sprinklers, and alarm systems, and also is to collect fees for any state certification required inspections, which would be schools, liquor license, firework sales out of tents.
And am I correct to recall that you came up with this by perhaps surveying some other towns' fee schedules to come up with a sense of what the market's like?
Yes. We took area towns approximately the same size, got what they had, took the average, and that's what we used.
Okay. Questions from the council? I was just doing an introduction, and I'm going to open a public hearing. Thank you for that point of order, Counselor Testa. Now that we've discussed the contents of the change in the ordinance, I'm going to open up the public hearing for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance change? Going once, twice, three times, I close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the revised ordinance as presented in our packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, it being an ordinance, we should have a roll call vote.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Thank you. Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to item seven, which is discussion and possible action regarding UE Local 222 CILU CIPU and its sub-local CLU Number 75 affiliated with the United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America Para-educators contract. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you also could remind us who you are for the record.
Cindy Lavelette, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Board of Ed.
Oh, sorry. Roxanne McKay, Board of Ed Chair.
Sal Menzo, Superintendent.
And if you could let us know what's new for this contract, what's changing?
All right, the highlights of this contract is for a union of 151 employees, we have a two-year contract to move forward. It would be retroactive starting July of 2016 and ending June 30, 2018. In the current year, the 1617 year, the general wage increase at the top step would be 1.99, and there's no GWI at the other steps. And in the 1718 year, we'd be looking at a GWI increase at the top step of 1.99, GWI increase at the other steps 1.25, with no step movement. Our insurance, there would be an increase in the deductibles in the current year, they're currently under a PPO, so the increase in deductibles for all of the areas, including office visits, urgent care, ER visits, outpatient visits, and inpatient hospitalization. And then in the second year of the contract, the core plan would be the HSA with an option to buy up to the PPO. There's also an improvement in the language, should we make a movement to change carriers. Gives us much more flexibility and ease to do so. There are a couple of significant language changes in this contract. In addition to the financial and benefit portions of the contract, one is a language change regarding layoffs, displacements, vacancy, and transfer procedures. The prior contract included language that allowed that process to take, all of those processes to take place only by seniority, and the language in this proposed contract allows those changes to happen based on other considerations in addition to seniority such as attendance, job performance, and best needs to suit the needs of the students that are within the district. Also improves the language for timelines and notification, just to make the processes a little bit easier, a little more fluid for us. Another significant contract language change would be to the just cause language, which changes the threshold for proof of just cause, not that you wouldn't always try to be supportive and intelligent and just in any disciplinary action you would take, but it does lower the threshold for having or allowing a grievance on such an issue. The final significant language change is, in the proposed contract, would be language added to allow a para educator to apply to the assistant superintendent for an unpaid day off in the event of an extenuating circumstance. It's a request that the para educators have made because they would like to be forthright when they have a very special occasion. For example, one of the ideas that they use would be a military graduation for a spouse or for a child of their own, and they wouldn't want to have to put in sick time, they would want to be able to be forthright and ask for an unpaid day and have approval to go to something like that within the contract confines.
Thank you. And as a procedural matter, am I correct to recall that if we take no action tonight, that the contract will pass as it's a tentative agreement at some point in the next several days or weeks?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Reviewed the contract, there's some good things here. I just, one thing jumped out at me, and that's the, you know, I disagree with the steps plus the GWI, but it appears that there's a preclusion or there's not an increase in step except for step nine in a particular portion of this. It would be step nine and above, I guess.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, to be honest. Is it the 1617 year or the 1718 year?
I think it's the 1617. I'm looking at page 14 of the redacted copy of the contract as a chart, and if I look at the third column...
Yes, that's because step nine is the top step, and so therefore the step, the GWI goes at the top step only of the 1.99.
Okay, so...
So in the other years, there's no increase at any of the other steps, so there's no general wage increase. However, those, the people on the other steps would move up a step. So a person who is working at step two would move to step three.
So in effect, somebody who has attained step nine, and let's say they are in effect at step 12, which doesn't exist, they're getting an increase, it's like getting a step?
Yes.
In addition to the GWI?
No, not in addition to the GWI. They would get only the GWI. Because they're already at step nine, there's no higher step to move to, they remain at step nine?
Well, I thought this shows that they would be getting 20.45 at step nine. So now you have somebody who's in effect past step nine. Are they getting the increase of 2045 to 2086 plus the GWI?
No, the 2086 is what the new number would be with a GWI increase of 1.99.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of the union, I think there was 100 in...
151.
151 employees.
Yes.
How many are on the step program? Are they all, or were there some hired after?
Everybody who is hired comes in at step one.
Okay.
And then depending on what the contract history has been, typically, they move up a step every year unless there was a step freeze in the contract. So for somebody to be at step nine, they would have to have been employed with us for minimally nine years, possibly longer if there's been step freezes historically within the contract. So the majority of those 151 members are at the top step. This, most of our para educators have been with us for nine years or longer.
Okay, thank you.
There being nothing else from the council, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Chairman. Very quick, do they have the HSA now at all or not?
They do not have the HSA now at all, so it will be new to them in the 1718 school year. We did consider it for this year, but then when it became a retroactive contract, you can't switch in the middle of the year.
So the, I know, reading the contract, July 1, you fund the $1,000 into their accounts, but then the next contract year, you fund 500 on 9-1 and 500 on 3-1? Is there a reason why you wouldn't just...I mean, I know, I guess the reason...
Yes.
But I mean, is there a...
Right. The reason behind that was because this will be new to the para educators, and they wanted to have advanced time to plan and start to save their funding so that they can build up the money that they would need to fund the deductible on their own. So in the first year, if we provide more of it upfront at an earlier date, if they have an illness or anything that comes up earlier in the year...
Right.
...it funds it. And then in the second year, or as years progress, then it changes after that because people would have had ample time to plan their finances accordingly and to start to save for those medical expenses that would arise.
And is there, do they have a chance through payroll deduction to make contributions?
Yes, they do.
Into the...okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If, oh, Counselor Laterno.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Are you going out to the audience first or...
I was going to go out to the public.
Okay, I'll wait.
Any comments from the public on this? There being none, I bring it back to the council. Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to pass this contract regarding UE Local 222 CILU CIPU and its sub-local CLU Number 75 affiliated with the United Electrical Radio and Machine Workers of America Para-educators.
Is the motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you very much.
You, too, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending workers' compensation claim regarding Colston, First Town of Wallingford...
Second.
...and, sorry, for Sections 1-225F and Section 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending tax appeal matters of North Colony Development Group, LLC, First Town of Wallingford.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session as moved, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I think we outnumber the public, so I'm going to ask you to clear the council chambers. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are on to item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the settlement of the pending workers' compensation matter regarding Colston versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion from the council? Questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Having already done the executive session on item 10, we're on to item 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the settlement in the pending tax appeal matters of North Colony Development Group, LLC versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the council? Seeing none, any discussion from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. There being no further business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare this meeting adjourned.